Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Monday, March 13th, 2017 version of the Public Works Finance Committee. It's kind of a skeleton crew because of spring break, just Gina Terusio and myself will be the quorum here. Les McDonald is going to represent the city management, and we've got Sarah Banks here to fill us in on some finance things. The first order of business is approval of the Public Works Finance Committee February 27th meeting minutes.
I think we should approve that.
Okay. I think it's unanimous. We're going to go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
Second item on the agenda is the dispersment report for February 2017. Sarah will walk us through that.
Okay. And looking at the CCSR, the expenditures ending February 28th, 2017 totaled $1,960,785. Our largest expense is payroll, and that came in at $969,640. And other than that, we had pretty normal expenditures through the month. The most notable one that you would see would be from, we had to pay the state insurance fund for our workers' comp premium for 2017, and that was $202,786. Other than that, it's pretty basic, standard bills throughout.
Do you pay workman's comp for the whole year in one payment?
Yes. Yep, that's our annual premium.
Okay. Regardless of how many employees we have or whatever.
If it changes, if we have different employees, our premium can change a little bit, but it typically runs around that amount.
And then if things fluctuate in the downward, in terms of employees, do they rebate you?
During the year? No, it's an annual premium. Yeah, and it's based on the previous year's amount, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I would entertain a motion to...
Oh geez. Yeah, I would move that we approve those, that dispersment report. Thanks for the explanation. I appreciate that.
I suppose we need to sign something on it as well.
Yeah, it's right here. I'll pass these around. So... That one, I'm going to hold off on. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next thing up is the fourth quarter financial report, July 1st to September 30th of 2016, and Sarah's going to be in charge of that, too.
Yep. So, looking through this, all the, for the year-end, most of our percentages were in range. There shouldn't be anything that's too questionable. And parks and rec for capital outlay, that was a bit above the 100%, and that's mostly because we had an irrigation pump go out at Mountain View that we had to replace, and so that created a much more, a much higher percentage in capital outlay. We had a little more transfers in the art funds because we had a $750 donation that was transferred to IS for the handhelds that they used at the farmer's market for payments, which they didn't have in the past, but that was what that was for. And then also, in the Hamilton Fund, that was in the open budget, which you might have already seen it, but I just wanted to remind you that those, the increase in that was because there wasn't anything budgeted in '16 for the ball fields. And so those funds had to be, the budget had to be opened up, and those funds were expensed for that, so that created an increase in that percentage. Other than that, everything else is pretty much in line.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
I move that we approve the financial report.
I'll agree with that. Motion carries. Item number four, escrow agreement between Moscow Urban Renewal Agency and IDQ.
Okay. This escrow agreement is required by DEQ to allow for an early closeout of the remediated property at Sixth and Jackson Street. This closeout is going to be before the compliance is complete. URA has already established a secondary water treatment system, which will continue until those well samples meet the requirements that they have in their remediation plan. URA is requesting that the city of Moscow hold in escrow the amount of $5,260. This is on the URA's behalf. These funds will be held in an interest-bearing account, and then once the remediation is complete, the well samples are tested, that those funds and interests would be released back to the URA.
I'm guessing that the interest is a non-factor at .0005 something percent.
Correct. It's very minimal.
Okay. Guess we could...
I'm just verifying a few things, if you would, sir, if you'd allow me to do that. So, we're looking at probably another year, it says here, in the, of operation of this, of these wells.
Yep, that's what they're planning for, to take up to a year.
Okay. But it probably won't, right?
Hope not.
We've got, we've got one already that's clean.
One is already clean, correct. So this is a secondary one, yes.
Alyssa might have something to add to that.
They're requiring us to test. We can test more often, but we have to test at least quarterly, and we have to meet the ratios on the contaminants that they're testing for before we can close it out. So it's really all a project estimate at this point.
Okay. And, and will we close it sooner if we hit our mark, or will we have to run it for another year?
If we were to get two quarters below the levels that they require, then we could close out sooner.
Okay, good. So this is maximum funding?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Okay.
I move that we approve the escrow agreement with the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency. Can we put it on the consent?
I think that's a consent agenda item.
Excellent.
Number five on today's agenda is the 2017 pavement management program, the Slurry Seal Award, and Steve Schultz is going to tell us about that.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Oh, really, right.
Did you use the right language?
Well, it says recommend approval. We're recommending approval. We're not approving.
Right.
Whoa.
No tie.
Not this time, sorry. It was a long day, didn't have time to change.
That's all right.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk a little bit about slurry, and this year's slurry package that we're looking to deploy. The pavement management program was funded with quite a bit more money this year, and we're excited for the first part of that to go towards slurry. As you know, we've been using slurry seals for the last six years. This will be our third use of slurry, and we've seen it does pretty well. It's done a great job sealing the roads, revitalizing the oils, keeping the asphalt soft, and, you know, it has some flexibility, so it'll last longer, keeps the cracking down, keeps the water from getting underneath the asphalt, which, as you know, causes potholes, which we're fighting still.
And will be for quite some time.
Oh, yeah. We're still just in the early stages of that. So, what we tried to do is work with the Inland Northwest Street Maintenance Co-op to get more of our local neighboring entities together to bring larger groups of, larger amounts of work to the region, and try to make competitive pricing, bring the price of these projects down. That can be seen in this year, it's a pretty good price. The engineer's estimate was $1.80 a square yard. It came in at $1.56 a square yard, so that was exciting to see. We've identified almost 150,000 square yards of asphalt, and they're good candidates. The streets are, they're in that, you know, that area where they need a little bit of help to get them, you know, a little crack filling, but they're overall in great shape. And, as you can see on the map here, the four areas, it's kind of hard to see. Up here, you've got, that's the Quail Run, Pintail area, they're around like Fire Station 3. And then we've got Rodeo and Jefferson, that area, also relatively similar aged streets that are in pretty great, in pretty good shape, just need some, need some more help to keep them going longer. And then Sixth Street, Itani, Panorama, that area. We've already done one application, what, three years ago, down in these streets? So, between Area 3 and Area 4, they're around the roundabout, and those streets to the south, that'll kind of blanket that whole area with this process. Let's see here. With that said, I guess the staff recommends the acceptance of the low bid from Intermountain Slurry Seal and award the contract in the amount of $228,852, and authorize staff approval for construction change orders in an amount not to exceed 10% of the contract amount.
Okay.
I had a couple just curiosity questions.
Sure.
When does this start? When do these, these four potentials start?
We have in the bid specifications, they can't start until, I think it's after July 4th, or right around that area.
July 2nd, I think.
July 2nd, and then they have to have it finished by about mid-August.
And is that a temperature-dependent thing, or is it just a window of opportunity?
It is, and it's also the window that we typically look for, for the best, you know, time of year to put this stuff down.
Okay. What kind of, and again, curiosity.
Sure.
I'm not questioning your methods at all. What kind of public notice, I mean, is it a big inconvenience for people? I mean, or can you drive on it pretty quickly afterwards?
Yeah, this type of product, they'll do a public notification usually at least a few days ahead of time. I mean, we'll, we'll start going out to the neighborhoods, and we'll start putting stuff on the website and everything like that for all our projects here pretty soon, but the contractor will be responsible when they come into town to put things out ahead of time, let everybody know. The product goes down that day, and you can drive back on it by the time people typically get off of work.
Wow.
So it's a pretty quick process.
Okay. Very cool. All right. I move that we recommend acceptance of the low bid from Intermountain Slurry Seal and award the contract, do I have to read all of this, in the amount of $228,852, and authorize staff approval for construction change orders in an amount not to exceed 10% of the contract amount.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is in line with what, where we're trying to keep the best streets in top shape. That's where you get the biggest bang for your buck, and this is the way to go. So, I think we can put this on the consent agenda for next city council meeting.
Thanks for answering my questions.
Yeah. Thank you very much, guys. Item number six on today's agenda is Office of Highway Safety Mini-Grant, special emphasis. Lisa Anderson.
And I have Officer Jay Waters joining me today. He manages this program for the department, so I'll go through the process, and then I'll let him talk to you about what he does to implement the program.
All right. Thank you.
So, in the past, we have seen these types of requests get approved through our annual emphasis program, and now they've pulled out some of these larger, I guess, more high-dollar amount emphasis to be separate.
They've canceled, they've canceled the distracted driving and the...
And that, okay. And they're doing it separately?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, when we had brought forth an overall package to you earlier in the year that had several emphasis in it, then, as Jay said, they've pulled out the distracted driving. I couldn't remember exactly what the detail was there. So the one we're bringing forth to you today is one that is for distracted driving, and it also has the seatbelt emphasis in it, and it will be over April 21st through the 23rd.
23rd.
And it happens to be Mom's Weekend at U of I. I don't know if that, did they, was that on purpose?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, lots of our population increases that weekend, I'm sure. So, what they've done is taken a look at the number of hours that they would need for overtime, the parameters of that, and then they've asked for a 25% match, which we can provide through in-kind services that we already have in-house, and I wanted to make a note that I had a typo in the document that outlined the individual specific amounts for the in-kind, and we have changed the total cost of grant and in-kind match to $11,790. We had made some changes up above, and I forgot to change my total, so I've already updated it in the MinuteTrak system, but I wanted to note that today, that the number was incorrect there, and so...
Can I stop you there?
Yes.
Say that again, please.
$11,790 is the correct total of, excuse me, just when we take the officers' hours, the $9,432, plus the in-kind match of $2,358.
Yes.
Total's $11,790.
Okay, it was just a math error, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes. It was a typo. We updated some numbers, and I forgot to change the total. So that gives you an idea of what the overall impact is of the emphasis, and then what ITD does is reimburses us for the overtime hours, and that covers also the benefits within that. So we'd like to have these approved at least a month ahead of the emphasis, so that they can get their paperwork taken care of. So I will let Jay go ahead and talk to you about how he implements this with his officers.
We drive around a lot. So essentially, I did, I did choose Mom's Weekend on purpose, and that's because our city is going to be flooded with people. And, and whether you folks have any personal dealings with distracted driving or not, I'm sure you do, I, I see it all the time.
Everyone does.
Everyone, right. So, it is a problem. It does cause a lot of crashes. It's just not safe. And even though the Idaho Transportation Department has, they no longer do scheduled emphasis patrols for distracted driving, they do leave it up to the individual departments to apply for these mini-grants, so that they can do them during times that are more beneficial to them. In the past, when ITD did have the distracted driving grants, they did it over holidays, which is the worst time to do one for us, because that's when everybody leaves. So, they were kind of inconvenient for us, the way they had them scheduled. Now it kind of helps, because now we can plan them to suit our individual city and our individual needs during timeframes that are beneficial to us. What I also like to do is I like to try and include our neighboring agencies. I've, I've invited Leittau County to play, I've invited ISP to play. Sergeant Rich Adamson's here, he's, he's my liaison with ISP. They're going to have, they're going to have cars and personnel up to assist with this. Leittau County's providing a few cars to help with this, and so it's a multi-jurisdictional emphasis focusing on distracted driving as well as seatbelt usage, but we're also, you know, the officers are also going to expand for bicycle violations, because we, we do have that sort of thing going on, people cruising down the wrong side of the road. We have crosswalk violations, you know, where people almost get hit walking across the street to the co-op. I mean, we have all these things in our town, and if we have all these cars over, over a weekend where we have a lot of people in town, it just makes sense.
You going to be using some school buses this time?
No school buses. We're going to use two unmarked, two unmarked Suburbans provided by Leittau County, so no, no bus this time. And, and they can actually get more places than the buses can.
So, in here, it also talks about your pre and post survey.
Yeah, that's a requirement by ITD. So, approximately a week prior to the emphasis beginning, I just pick a spot in the city somewhere where I can see traffic, and I'll sit there and I'll count cars, and I'll count vehicles that people are texting on as they go by, and, and I do a ratio, do some math, and find out what the percentage of people driving are while distracted, and then we'll also do another one after the emphasis is concluded. But that's for paperwork purposes to ITD for reporting.
And then the, the numbers that you come up with, when you do that, when you're watching this, the number of distracted drivers, those statistics, how do, how do they get out in the world? How do we find out about them?
Well, I, I would actually pass that off to Sergeant Adamson, since he knows more about it than I do.
You're welcome to come up here and join in, sir.
We're not using the bus this time.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Sergeant Adamson of the State Police. I'm also the District 2 Law Enforcement Liaison for ITD's Office of Highway Safety. The statistics help out for NHTSA's purposes for tracking. It, that's how this, each individual state benefits with money that comes in through the state's Office of Highway Safety. So, it helps show a problem area, and that's how we benefit from getting funds from the Office of Highway Safety. And also, like I said, just statistically, if we can show percentages where there's an increase in texting and driving, distracted driving, we can focus more office and, officers in those specific areas to help curb that, so.
Cool. Thank you for joining us today.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Just, just a tidbit to add on to that. So, our local highway safety improvement program, where we apply for grants for infrastructure improvements, these same statistics are used for that program, and then where there's areas that we have high crashes or pedestrian accidents, those types of things, the same information that they have is used by the same system, and it pulls those numbers up. And so, you know, we have, we have ways that we benefit from this by more than just, you know, one type of thing. Safety is huge, so it also applies to our infrastructure improvements, too. We enter, and you've heard me talk about the web car system, and so the statistics that Jay gathers from doing these emphasis go into that system, and then are then downloaded to the national database that the ISP is talking about. So, it's good that we gather the data and make sure it gets into the system, and then we can move forward with other projects, too.
Then would you, if you get a count on, like I saw, you do your little patrol and you, your emphasis patrol, and you see X number of distracted drivers at the, on Jackson Street or whatever, is that going to get in the daily news so people can see, like, this, this is like something we notice, and this is something you should be aware of that's being watched?
I don't, I don't know if it would necess, if that specific survey would get into the daily, into the daily news. Prior to the emphasis starting, there would be a press release, and it would, it would discuss some of the, some of the statistics as far as the increase in distracted driving, the increase in distracted driving crashes, and so on and so forth, as a part of the press release. Then, you know, if the, I'm sure we're going to get the press involved in this, and they'll, so they'll be aware of it. They may even ride with us, like they did last time, and, and they, they may want to ask for some of those numbers as well to be provided as part of their stories, just like they did during the cop on the bus thing.
It seems like clearly it's a cancer that's going on, and people need to be more aware of it.
Well, it's the...
Not, not only is it happening, but people are watching it.
Well, it's the latest thing, so, yeah. The whole texting craze, so.
I like that everyone that uses the road is involved in this. Yeah, the bikes and, and everybody, because we have a little bit of violation in all those areas.
Bike salmon going upstream, texting at the same time.
Also, this helps, you know, and, and one of the main reasons why I invite the other agencies to play is, is A, this is their area, too. I mean, this is where they live, this is where they have their families, but it also gives us an opportunity to work together and, and develop those bonds between the agencies.
While I have issues with, personally do not have issues with distracted driving, I do when it's somebody that's not watching where they're going and they get in front of me. The best part of this is the collaboration, I think. I'm very impressed with that, and I, I, yeah, I just think it's great, and it really serves our community well. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And thank you, too, sir.
Okay, so we're requesting today that you approve our, our application to submit the mini-grant and to the Office of Highway Safety.
Okay. I guess I would go ahead and recommend approval of the submit, the submittal of the proposed web cars mini-grant application and accept an anticipated award of $9,432 from the Idaho Transportation Park Office of Highway Safety with 25% in-kind contribution from the Moscow Police Department of $2,358.
Okay. I agree with that.
This is a consent agenda item.
I think that's a consent agenda item.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Waters. Lisa.
Am I supposed to say second, or can I say I agree, Les? What's the correct?
We have only two people.
You can agree.
You can agree, you just do.
I don't know if I'm supposed to be more official than that.
Quite that formal all the time here.
Okay, good.
Item number seven on today's agenda is official park name recognition, recommendation for Peekaboo Park. Dave Shot, David Shot is going to give us details. Good afternoon, David.
Well, good afternoon.
Hello.
Thank you for having me this afternoon. This is the official park name recommendation for Peekaboo Park. A little bit of background, on September 19th of 2016, council approved a development agreement for the Peekaboo State subdivision. As part of the agreement, just under 12,000 square feet was dedicated to parkland. A working name for the park was designated Peekaboo Park until a formal name was considered and adopted by council. After 60-day public notice period, the Parks and Recreation Director, with approval from the Parks and Rec Commission, are submitting the recommended name Morgan's Orchard Park to the committee today, and then council next week. Just to back up a little bit, the Peekaboo State subdivision is located in the north part of town, Orchard. I believe this is Sloan Acre, and then in this square would be the subdivision with the park right about in the middle on the south end. This was the plot for the park, or the subdivision, excuse me, with the park being here in Track B, Lanny Lane and Peekaboo Street at that intersection. A little bit of history, how we, we got here. We used our 2004 naming policy. So on September, the Parks and Recreation Commission was presenting an overview of the timeline and the process to name the park. The information was distributed in October, and this was for a 30-day period for nominations. We sent out 241 letters to everybody within a quarter mile of the park, and that coincides with the National Recreation and Parks Association definition for a pocket park and walking distance is a quarter mile, so that made sense. We did two press releases. We had pickup locations of the nomination form at the HERC City Hall and the Leittau County Library here across the street, and we also sent letters off to the school principals to see if any of the classes wanted to participate in the naming process. In December, the Parks and Rec Commission, they considered 49 nominations, so we had 49 nominations for the park, which is outstanding, and they recommended Morgan's Orchard Park. And I'd like to take this opportunity to read the winning nominations justification, if I may. For many years, the David and Ida Morgan family lived and worked their Orchard Avenue land. David and Ida purchased their acreage in 1924. Ludwig and Ida Morgan, Moran, purchased their property, now Peekaboo Estates, in the late 1940s. The rural setting and fertile ground of the Morgan property provided a perfect place to raise cows, chickens, grow apples, plums, pears, garden vegetables, turnips, beets, pretty much everything. Mrs. Morgan kept careful records for the neighborhood as they traded goods, a piglet for a bush of apples, loaves of bread for a basket of vegetables. Her orchards and, orchard and gardens were known as Morgan's Orchard. So, David, Ida, and the grand, and the children are gone, but their grandchildren and great-grandchildren would like to memorialize the Morgan family with the naming of the park. So, that was the justification that the Parks and Recreation Commission is recommending. This instigated a 60-day public comment period. We did receive one public comment, and I'll read through that. It's very brief. So, "I agree with the naming of the new park as Morgan's Orchard Park. I appreciate the thoughtfulness and respect involved in naming the park after its past." So, in late February, the Parks and Recreation Commission considered the one comment, and made a final recommendation for Morgan's Orchard Park, which brings us to the, the meeting today for consideration, and then council consideration next week. With that, our recommendation is to officially name the park Peekaboo Park property Morgan's Orchard Park, and the action is the same, or provide us with further direction. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Well explained. Now, I was going to ask how you, how they arrived at that, or what was the history of the Morgan's Orchard, but you did a great job of presenting that. I think I would recommend that we move forward with the official naming of the Peekaboo Park property as Morgan Orchard Park, but I would want to put this on the regular agenda so that it would come out in the meeting and, and the explanation be more publicly available.
It is such a sweet story. It really is. I think it will be nice to have it on a regular agenda, so people can hear it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I will plan on doing so. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, David. Item number eight on today's agenda is consideration of the Custodial Services Bid Award. David's going to do that as well.
This is the consideration of the Custodial Services Bid Award. And I've got a short PowerPoint here. So the city issued invitation to bids with published dates in the Daily News on February 14th, and again on the 21st, to provide janitorial services on certain city buildings. The list of the buildings, City Hall, Police Station, Egan, Fire Station 3, the HERC City Shop, the two department, our Water Department Buildings, the Wastewater Treatment Plant, ITC, and the Paul Mann Building. We hosted a mandatory pre-bid meeting on February 23rd. We did get two people, or two companies... We did get two people, or two companies to show up, ABM and Clearview. Seal bids were due on March 2nd and read aloud on that date at 2:10 PM, I believe. This was the bid results. ABM Industries had a total bid of $346,333, as compared to Clearview Cleaning Incorporated at $384,281. With council consideration and approval of the bid, we will execute a professional services agreement. This is a three-year term agreement, so it spans three years. It's just under three years, so we're looking at March 27th through January 31st of 2020. And that's the breakdown of the bids, so we had a couple days to get us started. The second column here is about 10 months' worth, and then it goes to kind of an annual. So a little bit increases from year to year. Our recommendation with this is the acceptance of the low bid from ABM Industries. They're currently our janitorial contractor, in the amount of $346,333, for the entire professional services agreement and forward on to, for full council authorization, or provide us with further direction. Happy to take any questions or clarify anything?
Seems pretty straightforward to me, Gina. But at the same time, I think this is a regular agenda item as well. I'd like to see this in front of everyone for comment and consideration at the next council meeting.
Does this represent a huge change from what we have right now, cost-wise?
There were some changes. Cost-wise, if you look at the second column, let me go back. So currently, our agreement is $101,230. If you adjust this number to an annual, it turns out to be $119,513, which is approximately an 18% increase. I did talk to the district manager for ABM on why we're seeing that increase. His first, without hesitation, was wages. He wants to be competitive. According to him, he's got his best staff here on the city of Moscow buildings, and it's primarily wages. We also increased the scope of the agreement somewhat. The HERC was being cleaned five days a week. We've moved that to seven days a week. So there was an increase in that cost for the HERC, for the seven days of coverage with the weekend use we get there. Police Department, there was a two-hour window that custodial staff could be in the building. It's a secure building. We increased that to four hours, so there was a little bit of a cost with that. The other buildings just had a kind of a standard increase in costs. If you do the math between the adjusted number here to here to here, it's about 3% a year.
I just feel like there's going to be questions about that, because there is some math to be done there. And if you, if they're available to present that, that'll speed that along.
Okay.
I just don't think that should be hidden in the consent agenda.
Okay.
Someone will take it off, I think, if you put it there, so.
Oh, I'd be happy to do the math and I'll present that.
Yeah, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Item number nine on today's agenda is state and local agreement Paradise Path Underpass and Multimodal Extension. Lisa's going to tell us what's going on with that, hopefully that's moving forward rapidly.
Yes. This is one of Councilmember Boland's favorite projects, isn't it?
Correct, it is.
Good, good. So this has been, we've been working on this for about four or five years now, off and on, and this is now officially called the Paradise Path Underpass and Multimodal Extension Project. ITD assigns names to projects when we submit them based upon the locations of them, so that's why I added the little, the AKA, the Steiner Highway, it underpasses what we've been referring to it quite often. So after submitting the grant application, we received notification that had been fully funded, and we submitted that last spring, so it's timely that we are seeing the award about a year later with ITD's process. They have done something a little bit different with this one, where they did hand it off to be managed by the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council rather than in-house. And we're seeing more of that with our contracts from ITD, not having as much staff in-house to manage projects. They work with LTAC, and they have a contract with them to manage a lot of the local projects, so. We'll be working with LTAC, and we had requested that we had design in '18 and construction in '19 based upon the schedule that Public Works had put together, but they decided they wanted to do design this year, even though they just now got us the contract. And so we'll be moving forward quickly with this. Design will happen, and we'll try to get started on that as soon as we get this signed and down to them. And then construction will be next year. It's pretty straightforward here, they're asking us to submit a 10% of the total of our funding match. Can't get words out today. To go along with this agreement. And we also have a corresponding resolution that goes along with this for approval. So as soon as we have everything approved, we'll be sending it down. Having full funding is great, so we don't have to make any changes to what we had proposed. We did have a question from Councilman Steed about the length of the path, and I'm going to, Les, address that for you.
I'm not sure I saw his question, but I suspect what it was...
I think I saw it too earlier. He was asking the same thing that we talked about earlier, so.
Sure. In the packet on the back of the agreement, there's this exhibit. This shows the location of the underpass, of course, at the Steiner, White, and State Highway 8 intersection. But the project also includes then the extension of the multimodal path on the north side of White Avenue to the east. The terminus point at the east end was a question. In one of the early documents, it was shown as ending at Blaine Street. In other documents, and what we've included in the state-local agreement, is actually ending at the southerly entrance into the fairgrounds near the...
That was my understanding.
Yeah, near the highway district office. There's also some potential that if the funding can be stretched far enough, that we might look at possibly extension of sidewalk a little bit further east to tie into the existing walk. I don't know if that'll happen within this grant, or if it would be something separately funded by the city, just to complete that connection on the north side. Everything east of Blaine is somewhat dependent upon the existing width of shoulder of the roadway and the bank next to the creek and what we can fit. So that's obviously yet to be determined in a design phase. But the intent is, at this stage, to go all the way to the fairgrounds entrance, if possible.
I noticed that the 10% match has an extra nickel on there, for some reason. Why is that? Not that it amounts to anything, I just...
It's the number that they gave us in the contract.
Okay.
I just double-checked that.
They wanted five cents on there instead of zero, huh?
Oh, do we have a typo? Was I really good at typos this last time?
10% of 39-590 is, not 39-5905.
Yeah, they have 05 in the agreement, so yes.
That's where it came from.
Yes.
Not a material difference, I just wondered why it was there.
Interesting.
We've kind of labored the point on this for a long time. I think this is a consent agenda item we can put on. We've already gone through this, the matching funds and the availability of them at length, so let's do that.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
I do get calls every now and then from just different people in the community wanting to know when we're going to hear about this, and I had told them last time that it wouldn't start until next year if we were awarded, and so I can't remember her name, but she'll be very happy.
Can exceed her expectations, that's nice.
Now we can start working on the one under the 95, the underpass under 95 as well.
This river?
That'll be the next thing, right on the same creek, under the bridge at the...
Ah, that one, all right.
Since that's already, you could already walk under that one, so.
[laughing]
I use that one occasionally. That completes our agenda today, so if nobody has anything further, I guess we'll adjourn the meeting.
We adjourn.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
Yeah.
Thanks, Les.